Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The regular meeting of the Grosso Township Planning Commission will come to order. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Aye, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
First item is our agenda. Just will point out that the Item 6, the Site Plan Review of the Vacant Grove Property, the Airport Commission and the Airport Manager are currently meeting down the hall. And assuming that they finish up on time, we'll keep this in spot number 6. But if their meeting is delayed and the applicant can't be here, we'll jump down to Item 7, finish that, and then come back when that applicant is, in fact, ready. Does anybody have any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Motion from Eric, support.
Support.
Support from Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We'll move to the next item, which is the review of the minutes from the January 30th meeting. Did anybody have any comments or bills for those minutes? Dan? Jay?
None for me.
Jim?
Looks good.
Eric?
Looks good.
Entertainer motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
So moved.
Motion from Eric, support.
I'll support.
Support from Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. As usual, Lori, very nice job.
Thank you.
We can always count on you.
All right.
Public comment. I don't see anybody in the audience at the moment, so public comment is complete. So, given that the applicant's not here for the Site Plan Review, we will move to Item 7, Discussion of Electronic Changeable Message Signs. A little background on this. Approximately four months ago now, I would say, we were approached by a citizen who advocated that Churchill should be able to have electronic signs to improve their communication with the citizenry. The justification for this was that with the loss of the EEO camera, that the ability to get messages out was basically not as good as it used to be, and that electronic signs would be a potential answer. And so it was asked for. Just following that, we got the information from a representative of the VFW who was having similar issues with communicating out their messages and things that, activities that were going on there. But in their case, where they do not own the property where they're currently, their building is that, they were advocating that the township actually, that the Planning Commission actually advocated zoning change, which would allow Grosso Township to install a community bulletin board, electronic sign, someplace that would, that would serve the purposes of being able for nonprofits to get their messages out. So both of these requests came to the Planning Commission requesting that the sign ordinance basically be changed to reflect these applications. The Planning Commission, at that point, turned to the Subcommittee, Zoning Ordinance Subcommittee, which consists of Jim, and Jay, and me, and Brian, and asked us to take a look at it and to see what we thought about possibilities, and to investigate it further, and kind of digest it a bit, and bring it back to this, to the Planning Commission with our basic thoughts after we'd had an opportunity to review it. We did that. We met, I think it's been about four weeks ago now, maybe, give or take. We took the opportunity that, given the fact that Grosso Township, it was proposed that a community sign be published, or be put up, that we find out what the Grosso Township manager thinks about this. And so we invited him to the meeting as well, to hear his thoughts and get his concerns. We asked him to document these in a letter to us, which he has provided to the Commissioners tonight. I'll take a minute and read this. I think first, a little background. The issue of community sign is an old one. It's been around probably since the days of, well, I can remember walking around the corner of, of Four Corners, basically, looking for a sign location with Pam Fruci, and that goes back 15 years. And there were always various reasons why, you know, it never came to fruition. So, you know, when Dale heard this, this was like deja vu. But I thought it was important for him to spell out exactly what his thoughts were on this, and so I have this letter, it's dated today, it's to me, from Dale Ream, Township Manager, regarding electronic sign boards. It reads as follows. "As you are aware, for many years, the idea of electronic sign boards in the township have been explored, and I understand the Planning Commission is currently reviewing this matter. Therefore, I would like to share my thoughts from the administrative perspective. Please consider the following. Point 1: An electronic sign board on township property shall require maintenance requiring additional resources to already stressed budgets. Item 2: How would the message input on the community sign board be physically controlled? At what location? Is wireless internet required? By whom? The township staff is very much stretched. Point 3: Every community group would demand message time, making a community sign board not very useful and adding to staff workload for minimum benefit. Point 4: Should a community group offer a donation for a community sign board? The township board will need to consider all of the above. Donations are not always free. Point 5: Turning control over to a community group would create an additional regulatory effort requiring staff review. When and how will this be accomplished? Point 6: Should a community group/ nonprofit group desire to place an electronic sign board on their own property, it is possible, from the legal perspective, the township may be viewed as regulating speech regarding the content of the message, causing potential regulatory issues. Due to the above considerations, I do not support the permitting of electronic sign boards. Signed, Dale Ream, Township Manager." So, with that information, Brian, I wish, I wish that you would please come and speak to us and summarize the discussions that took place at the Subcommittee meeting, some of the thoughts that we had to bring back to the full commission.
Absolutely. I did put one brief summary slide together, let me get ahead to that. And I did issue a memo that went out again today. I hope you all have copies, and thank you for your patience with me. I think you all know I had some travel issues and wasn't able to get back and get this to you in a more timely fashion, but I did want you to have something, at least in advance, and then something for us to discuss tonight. So, a lot of my memo is really sort of redundant of things that I've presented to you before. The last time we spoke on this, I had a couple of slides with a number of bullet points that were my concerns, as well as concerns that were generally reflected by the Ordinance Subcommittee, and some things that we had discussed amongst the full commission as well. So, I think for starters, you know, we'll go back and I'll just reiterate my initial concern, and if I speak for the Subcommittee and I'm offline, stop me, please, since all three of you are here. But I think we generally agreed that this type of signage really was contrary to the intent of the Macomb Street District, and we had all kind of, I think for the most part, we thought that it just wasn't appropriate within that context. I've got a couple of items pulled right from the Intent and Purpose section of the ordinance speaking to that, and I think you'd be hard-pressed to make a case that ECM sign is compatible with those standards, or at least with the intent of what we're looking for. As the Chairman just reviewed, there is some, some concern and a general objection from Township Administration on these types of signs. That relates really to the municipal sites, for the most part, and I think he's relayed and expressed his concerns very well. I do appreciate Dale's time on this. He actually took the time to meet with Jim John and I at the last meeting, to sort of go over these things in person, and then took the time to put it in writing for you all tonight. So, I certainly appreciate his time and effort on this matter. And that really drops us down to the last section of uses where this would be potentially appropriate, would be for those institutional uses, and that's really how we got here to begin with. The request that came forth was from a church. Obviously, if we were to open up the ordinance, it wouldn't just be for that particular church, but it would be institutional uses township-wide. And I think we, we really still have the same general concerns, and that relates to the fact that our institutional uses are all within residential zoning districts. So no matter which church it is, which institutional use it is, we're always going to have potential conflicts with nearby residential, whether it's next door, across the street, down the block, whatever the case might be. We will have to make sure that we have some pretty strict regulations to protect those residences. The last thing I think any of us want would be for a giant, bright ECM sign, you know, glaring into somebody's front window. And so we'd have to make sure we protect against that. I did mention to the Subcommittee, as well as I think to the full group last time, we can put restrictions in place that will help to protect that. We can have hours of operation. We can have lighting level limitations. I do have some ordinances which actually have daytime versus nighttime distinctions in terms of the brightness or the illumination levels they can have. And we can also regulate the frequency of change. All that being said, these are still pretty difficult to enforce. Now, you know, if somebody's violating it and we're informed of it, we can send zoning out, and they can certainly review it, look into it. But the expectation is not that we're going to have somebody from Community Development park their car across the street and sit there and watch with the stopwatch how many times per minute, per hour, the sign is changing. We're not going to have them out there with a light meter testing the brightness at certain times of day. So there is still a bit of a concern. Certainly, if somebody's violating it, we have the right to enforce the ordinance. I'm just suggesting that it will be difficult to sort of pin them down to that. It's, most of these things are going to happen in the evenings, potentially weekends, and obviously, we don't have zoning enforcement during evenings or weekends. I think the last thing really to get into, and this is a similar point to before, and that is, while legally, we are allowed to regulate signage differently by different uses and/or districts, Dale did have the opportunity to speak with the Township Attorney, which was something we were, we were hoping to get his opinion on too. So, there really aren't legal concerns to, say, allowing it for institutional uses, but not in the Macomb Street District. But I think there's still the same concerns present, and that really relates back to the idea of fairness. You know, are we potentially going to open the doors for people on Macomb Street to come in before ZBA and say, "Well, all the churches have these types of signs. It's not fair that we can't have these types of signs." And I'm not suggesting that that should necessarily be approved at face value, but there is the potential there that we come in and somebody presents that argument in terms of fairness. And I did not speak directly with the Township Attorney, but through my conversation with the Township Manager, he did offer up the same types of concerns that we've already talked about and that I've already raised. Specifically, you know, all of our churches are within residential districts, obviously surrounded by residential land uses, the same types of things that I, I just alluded to. So, that's, I think about all I have right now, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to take any questions. I did put forth in my memo a host of bullet points of potential regulations, so if you do wish to pursue this still, there, there are a number of things we can write into an ordinance that would help to protect us from all of the harmful impacts, or potential, I shouldn't say definite, but the potential harmful impacts that could arise. And I just gave you kind of a laundry list of some of the things that we've utilized in other communities that do allow these signs. So, that certainly could warrant some additional discussion. You know, I think we're, we're probably at a point where, in my opinion, I think we've talked about this enough. Maybe that's just me, and ultimately, it's, you know, it's your decision whether to move forward or not. But I, I keep coming back to the same conclusion, and that really is that, I just, I'm not sure this is the right community for this type of signage. I think there are too many potential impacts, which again, we could regulate, but I do want to be cautious, and we've talked before about kind of the slippery slope. Once we open the door for this, it's, we're not going to be able to close the door on it. We can continue and uphold our regulation, but I do think that, you know, if, if we open the door for it, I do think it's a matter of time before we're getting requests from other areas, other uses, which is only going to raise more concern and more potential issues for, for the community.
Thank you, Brian. Before we run it around the table, getting, getting thoughts as to this issue, I'd just like to share one other thing that was important when Dale spoke with the Attorney, and that was, is that the thing that cannot be regulated is content. We can put up a zoning ordinance standard that regulates size and all the various physical characteristics that you want, but if, you know, the given business on Macomb Street, for example, wants to display, like they do, you know, over in Trenton, you know, a bottle of detergent up on their sign, because that's what's on sale this week, they're entitled to do it. And there is absolutely nothing that, that we could do to, to regulate content. So, it isn't just necessarily words that we have to be concerned about. It's other things as well, which, which impact the, certainly, the, the character of Grosso. So, that was another point that the Attorney made as well. And while I'm thinking about it, I do want to thank Dale for, for taking the time to help us with this issue, both in talking with the Attorney and with writing this letter. Dale is a great asset to this community and to this Planning Commission, and his work is appreciated. So on that note, I will stop. I think I'm just going to start with our Subcommittee. I'll start with Jim over here, and see what Jim thinks about this. Basically, the issue in front of us is, is, does this Commission want us, as a Subcommittee, to explore this further and to draft regulations, or do we simply drop it? That's essentially the question. Jim?
Brian, thanks again for putting us together. It's exactly framed the way we talked about it in our meeting. I'm more than willing to discuss it further, so I'll put that on, on the record. If we vote to further discuss this in the Subcommittee, that's great. I'm leaning in the direction, though, as of right now, with Brian's summary, which I was a part of, it's not really compatible with Macomb Street District. I have personal concerns about the signs in front of churches. Most of the churches are in residential areas, so it's, it's a huge conflict. When I think of having a sign, if I was living next to a church, it's not something I would particularly want. The difficulty of regulating, I understand the issues. Don't feel like going down that road, so. Great summary, but I'd be in favor of either dropping it or voting no, so.
Understood. Jay, you couldn't make the meeting, but I know you knew what was going on, so.
Yeah, that's right. Right, so I didn't make the last meeting, I made the meeting before that, and I, I agree, as Jim said, you know, if the Committee decides, or if the Commission decides that we ought to continue, I'm happy to continue to do that. But I'm in, in a concurrence with, with Jim, and I think with Brian, that, you know, if there is a time for these signs on Grosso, now is not it. You know, as we see what other communities are able to do in their regulations, you know, maybe that makes sense. If we see, you know, some of the things that we talked about, that frankly, you know, those of us on the Subcommittee don't understand in terms of the, the technology, and what could, you know, be the equivalent of a Kindle-type, you know, paper-white sort of presentation that just looks like words that are easier to change than, than going up and changing letters physically. You know, maybe things like that work, maybe the lumens become easier to regulate, you know, that's really, I think at this point, it's too much, there are too many reasons, as has been stated here on your slide and in your memo. Too many reasons why it's not a good time for us to do this. If, and I, and I think a big part of that is that there doesn't appear to be a, a desire to do this at our legislative level. In other words, our Board does not appear to, you know, be pushing for this. If they were, you know, then, then we could probably craft something that could minimize the damage, but I think that's all we'd be doing at this point, as opposed to making an enhancement to the island. And as you indicated, you know, these things are not easily undone, once the door is opened. So, at this point, I think it would, it would be wise to set this down for a while, and if there's a push in the future, hopefully not, you know, too near future, but if there's a push in the future, we can revisit it, look and see what other communities have had success with, and, and where other communities have had, have made mistakes that we can learn from, then, you know, I'd be happy to, to pick that up and be a part of that as well. But at this point, I don't think it makes sense.
Mr. Chair, if I could just jump in real quickly?
Please.
So, just, Jay, you kind of said a couple of things that, that struck home with me that I, I think are some points to also make moving forward, again, depending on what the, the will of the Commission is. So first and foremost, this was referred to you by the Board. So the Board asked, basically, referred the, the woman from the church to you to come in and present the idea, discuss it, and essentially left the decision up to you all at this point in time, whether to draft amendments or whether to, to hold off. So really, this, I, I think, they've already said, "We want to know what you guys think." So it's, in my opinion, it's, it's really up to you whether this moves forward or not. And then Point 2, Jay also mentioned the idea of, maybe not at this time, and I, I think this is something where, in the future, now, we've talked before about the need to potentially update your master plan in a two- or three-to-five-year time span. Nothing immediate, but we do know that it's going to be forthcoming. And, you know, this is the type of thing where I think we can present these ideas as part of either a re-review of the plan for Macomb Street, to, to then kind of identify and understand whether this might be something, whether there's been enough change since that was originally drafted, whether there is enough interest from the public and the business community to maybe set the stage for something like this to be drafted. And I think that would really be the opportune tool to gauge that. We really, we can use the master plan process to gauge whether or not people want to see these, and, again, in a, in a manner that would be still regulated and restricted, but it will provide us really a broader window into public opinion, more so maybe than, and no disrespect to the couple of groups that have come before us, but that's still only two groups out of the entire township. So, I just want to kind of plant that seed now, too, that I think the time will come where we could rehash this conversation in a much broader context and get, get a lot more public input than what we've received so far.
Thank you, Brian. Good points. Dan?
Um, I have a question, is there, is there any type of signage?
I think we do allow those, but not the electronic. I think the manuals are still permitted. I'd have to double-check that.
The gas station for pricing on the gas?
Well, sure.
For example?
Sure.
That's one.
Yeah, and I, I think we still have, there's at least one other one I can think of on, on Macomb Street. VFW, and then I, I feel like the, I think there's, maybe, there may be one more, but, you know, as far as, the, the electronic is expressly prohibited, but I, I think on some level, we do still allow the manual, you know, change. For instance, the church, I, I think any of the churches could have, you know, a, a reader board or a display board, whatever we wanted to call it, where they could actually physically put up the letters, or numbers, or whatever, and, and change that. It's just the, the electronic component that's not permitted.
My intent was just, was basically...
Hmm?
No, originally, when I was thinking, having electronic signage was to have very conservative black-and-white lettering, no pink lettering, no, no flashing or changing, whatever. I was just trying to have open dialogue about the concept of having signage that is easy to change, where someone can open their computer and update their signage for different events that those have. I would still be open in discussing that, discussing that, but I, I am aware of the regulation challenges. It's not going to be a signage where it comes, comes before the Planning Commission, everyone reviews it, it's something that'd be changed all the time. And, you know, we could limit and not have pictures, but it is a challenge, and I'm definitely open in discussing it further.
Yeah, and just to that last point, we really, there, like I said, there are a lot of things we can do, and if you kind of look at the bullet points in my letter, those are just some examples. But we could not, we could not prohibit the use of pictures or images, et cetera, because then we're getting into content. So we'd still, we couldn't say text-only. We still, whatever goes within the confines of that sign, we really can't tell them what it is. We can regulate how bright it is. We can regulate hours of operation. We can regulate frequency of change, those types of things, but we really can't regulate what goes inside that box.
Thank you, Dan. Eric?
Yeah, I think, I think everyone's kind of well-said, right? The, the, the ease of an organization to change the messaging would be very beneficial for that organization. I just don't think that these signs have a place on the island right now. We don't have a straight-up industrial or straight-up business district. Everything is mixed residential, including Macomb Street. So I just don't think that they, they're proper for the island right now.
Thank you, Eric. I concur with, with Eric's opinions, as well as Jim and Jay and, and Dan. I think, to put this to rest, I would entertain a motion regarding the activities of Subcommittee to either proceed or not proceed with further investigation at this time. Can I make a motion, please?
Can I modify something really quickly?
Yeah, absolutely.
I would just further suggest that maybe we wanted to, you know, you've got a summary page up here right now, and maybe we want to just put a quick findings of fact into the, into the Township Board via the liaison, so that they know what we've looked at and why we're taking the action that we are.
That's a great idea. Spoken like a former liaison. Very good. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion, I assume we have a motion, Eric, to...
Yeah, so you can take that as a...
...for the findings of fact, as reflected in your bullet points for the, for the Board, detailing why we are not proceeding with a change in the ordinance to allow electronic signs for this discussion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Jim. Additional discussion? Call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Would you be so kind, please, as to put that in findings-of-fact format for the Board? Very good, thank you. Okay, we're going to drop back now to the Item 6, the Site Plan Review, Vacant Grove Specifically, development for an airport hangar and an office. The applicant is Kenneth R. Tartar, PO Box 1268 of Lincoln Park. The location is 9161 Grove Road. This is about 300 feet south of Grove Road on the airport property. It's almost directly behind where the DPW has their, their working area along Macomb Street, but it's deep into the property. The proposal is to construct an 80-by-80-foot hangar with an office, and this will support a helicopter flight service, a business. There'll be appropriate concrete pad area installed around the building to, again, to support the business. Zoning on this is A1 Airport and Light Industrial District. The ordinances are Site Plan Review, Article 21, and Article 9 of the Airport District. The process is normally a two-step process. Article 21, Site Plan Review dictates that we have the option of having a pre-application with the applicant in front of the Planning Commission, and then a second appearance for a final Planning Commission review and approval. Tonight, we're jumping straight to the, the second step, and there's a reason for this. I do expect the Planning Commission will vote on this. Normally, as I said, we, it's a two-step process, but there are a couple of reasons why we're, we're short-circuiting this to one. First, a concept review meeting was held with the applicant and with the Airport Manager. It was clear from the review that the proposed building is deep in the, deep in the airport, meaning that there is no impact on adjacent properties, and this simplifies the review considerably. Second, the Airport Manager requested that the Planning Commission address this application promptly in order to support this businessman, because we were aligning with... this businessman, because we were aligning with the airport commission and their activities to actually get a lease signed. And this all had to kind of come together at kind of the same time. And as I understand it, the airport commission just got done meeting, which is why the applicant is here tonight for us. And so, on that basis, the fact that it's a, at least in my opinion, a very straightforward application, plus the opportunity of the planning commission to support a new business on the island, that we take this as a single-step site plan review. So I do expect we'll vote on this tonight. Does anybody have any questions on that, as to why we're doing what we're doing? It is allowed in the ordinance. The pre-application is discretionary to the chair. I've used that. Okay, on that note, I'll stop. Would you please present, and then we'll hear from the applicant?
Yeah, and we do have both the petitioner, as well as Michael Duker from Airport, not from, but the Airport Commerce Park manager is with us tonight as well. So you've already covered a great overview, Mr. Chair, so just to give you, again, kind of a feel for what we're talking about. So this is the DPS site, if you can follow my cursor on the screen there. And then, if you were to drive back there and look almost immediately west, there's an existing hangar right here. And then our proposed location tonight is immediately south of that existing hangar. So you can see, just in relation to Grow and some of the surrounding buildings and uses, this is pretty well tucked away. It will not be visible from Grow, given its distance and given the buildings that are in between in terms of sightlines. So the views of it will be extremely limited, really will be only on the airport property. And I had to crop my picture, but, you know, this is sort of the very northern boundary of the airport property. If you, you guys can look out the window there and see how deep that goes before we start to have any waterfront impacts. So really, nothing there. Chairman noted, this is a principal permitted use in the ordinance, so there aren't any special use considerations. It really is just tied to reviewing it based on the standards of the A1 district, which I'll get to in a minute. So again, 9.2, 9.4 are the A1 district standards. And then, as Chairman mentioned, this does require site plan review in accordance with Article 21 also. So this is an excerpt from the plan itself. So what the petitioner is doing is leasing this area outlined in the bold black line here. That's the area they would be leasing from Airport Commerce Park. And then this is the proposed building right here, as Chairman mentioned, 80-by-80 hangar with a 40-by-20, sort of a lean-to-office building off of the west side of it. We have a few parking spaces immediately on the west side as well, and concrete pad just south of the building, obviously for access into the building for equipment and for, in this particular case, being a helicopter business. This is a photo that was included in the package. It is proposed to be an entirely metal-sided building. This is a, I don't believe this is the exact building, but this is a representative photo, and my guess is it would look something pretty darn close to this particular building. There are specs that were included in your material as well, but again, I think you'll see that it's pretty consistent with this photograph. So this one is really just a summary of the standards, as I mentioned before, from 9.4. Airport Commerce Park District is treated a little bit differently than some other districts. It has its own specific standards. There's no change proposed to public access. There won't be any new curb cuts. Circulation pattern is all internal and all existing. There are architectural standards. The ordinance does allow the metal-sided building, though it does put in place a requirement that there's to be some amount of brick or concrete block. Normally, we would see that kind of along the base of the building. In this case, that is not proposed at this time, and certainly you can, or I may defer any questions on that to the petitioner himself. But given that it's an architectural standard, planning commission does have discretion to allow a full-metal building. If you wanted to do so, I think that the location and general proximity of the building, the nature of surrounding uses, the separation distance from any public roadway, those would be considerations you might want to give if you were to waive that requirement. And I'm not suggesting that you should or you have to. I'm just planting that seed, depending on what the applicant's response is. Landscaping is a similar item. There isn't an actual requirement for landscaping. However, I did at least put forth in my letter a suggestion or an encouragement of the applicant to provide some landscaping on-site. There's nothing shown on the plan. Typically, we'd like to see, you know, something along the front of the building, just to sort of help break it up in terms of, you know, it could be something that helps to separate the parking lot from the building itself. I believe the hangar to the north does have a little bit of vegetation. I think there's some low-rise shrubs. You know, I'm not suggesting anything insane. I don't, he doesn't need to plant hundreds of trees or anything like that, but I do think there might be some benefit to the site for some additional low-rise plantings. Again, with that being said, this building is pretty much surrounded by outdoor storage uses and other hangars and the airport itself. So it won't really be visible to anyone other than those who are really using the site. Parking, I did have a couple of comments. They'll need to make some corrections to their parking plan. I tried to scale these out. Your ordinance requires minimum nine-and-a-half-foot-wide spaces. These appear to be a little bit short of that requirement, so we'd want to make sure that those are provided for. We also have two barrier-free spaces. Now, technically, they're only required to have one, but if they want to have two, that's fine. But if they're going to have two, and the one that they're required anyway, we need to make sure that we have the appropriate spacing and striping. So barrier-free spaces require, you're all familiar with it, there's the little sort of loading aisle, if you will, but there's generally a striped area. You know, my initial thought was if the petitioner really wants two barrier-free spaces, I would probably move this space over here, and then I would just widen this out. So I'd probably do two barrier-free with the, I believe if we do two, it's either a four- and eight-foot-wide striped zone in the middle, and then you could just accommodate that right here. Wouldn't really require anything that would be too disruptive to this plan. It's just a suggestion. But again, they're only required the one, so the easier solution would be just to make this a regular space and then just to stripe this as the loading aisle. So that can be resolved. And then the other parking item is that there's nothing shown between the spaces and the building itself. That's generally a bit of a concern on a number of levels, but predominantly due to vehicle overhang. So if there is no impediment between these spaces in this building, i.e. a curb, a sidewalk, even bumper blocks, which I don't think we really would want to see, that's not the preference, but there needs to be something that will prevent vehicle overhang from hitting the building, especially given that the proposal is for an all-metal building. The base of this building adjacent to these spaces, in the absence of any impediment, it's going to get dinged up pretty quickly and pretty easily. So I do, I do want to see something to help protect the building from potential damage of vehicle overhang. Lighting is just simply a note that if there's any exterior lighting, we just need to see the details. That's pretty straightforward. The township engineer has conducted a preliminary review. I believe his letter was included in your packets. I don't think there was anything earth-shattering at this point in time, obviously, you know, anything additional in terms of their requirements for grading utilities, drainage, et cetera, will be required as part of the permit process, should you grant site plan approval. There's no signage proposed at this time. That would be something, again, if they do want signage in the future, they just need to apply for the permit. In this case, it would probably be a wall sign. I'm not sure, do any of the hangars have signage, like the business signage, right now?
We have hangars in the front and the T-hanger.
Okay. So it's not a huge issue, but it's something to bring up. So if there is a sign proposed in the future, they'll need to comply with the ordinance. Waterfront, as I sort of alluded to before, unfortunately, I cropped my aerial a little too short, but there's no impacts on the waterfront at this particular site. And then, there's also, the last requirement is just tied to any implications to FAA requirements, because it is an airport. And again, this is a relatively low-rise building for an airport, and the manager did indicate to us that there won't be any FAA issues or concerns, given what's been proposed. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Thank you, Brian. Let's hear from the applicant, Mr. Tartar.
Good evening. Welcome to the planning commission. Mr. Tartar, a number of these issues were discussed at the concept review meeting with the airport manager, Mike, and these were communicated to you. Again, had we called you in front of the planning commission twice, okay, you were hurt about these things, had time to think about them? Yeah. And then come back with a final plan that would tell us exactly what you're going to do. Given the fact that we've shortened our press, process, we're looking to you to make decisions. Yes, not at all. Okay, on these things that we're asking you tonight about, tell us yes or no, and why. So let's run down the list here. The brick.
We do have one row of block on the bottom, from the foundation itself. Now, why it's not shown in that picture, I don't know, but I'll get with the contractor that's putting the building up, and maybe it's just a matter of shortening the siding.
Okay, Brian, are you comfortable with that? Yes. Okay, so the first thing is brick addition, consistent with the ordinance. Requirement number one. Agreed?
Yes, agreed.
Okay, item number two, landscaping. Request was for a few bushes, you know, spaced around so it looks kind of nice.
Yeah, I agree with that also. That's going to save me on the concrete, actually.
Okay.
So if I put a 10-foot barrier in front of the office, that's 10 feet of concrete that I don't have to pour. So that's agreed.
Okay, so again, landscaping, consistent with the ordinance?
Yeah, low-rise bushes or something like that.
Okay. The issue with parking, that was the issue where Brian pointed out about the handicap spaces being split and one not having the adjacent three-foot walkway?
I'll only want one, if that's what's required.
Okay, so you would drop back to one spot?
Yeah.
For, and that will be a spot with the siding?
With the siding, yes.
Okay, so that will be another contingency with the approval?
Yes.
One parking for, anyway, for handicap access plus the three-foot side?
Striped.
Oh, striped, okay. The next was the fact that Brian pointed out that you don't have barrier between your parking and the building.
That's exactly what we, what I was just commenting on.
So that's the 10-foot, you're going to back everything up 10 feet?
I'll back, back the parking up 10 feet or eight feet?
Away from the building?
Whatever it is, away from the building.
Put grass and stuff in there?
Grass in between it, right.
Okay, Brian, does that meet your requirements?
Yes.
Okay. Did I miss anything? Okay, then let's have discussion from the commissioners. Dan, we'll start with you.
I, once again, wanted to start with a question.
Time, just a moment.
Sorry, Dan. I was just going to say, I wonder if we can have the applicant explain his purpose and his...
Oh, sure. Fine, thank you. Yeah, I know you're starting a helicopter business, but would you add to it, please, and tell us what you're doing and when?
Well, basically, right now, we do, we do tours of Detroit for the public, and we also do training, helicopter training. We do pipeline surveys, some commercial work, not as much as the, as the tour work and the training, but that's basically it. And I also have another operation in Kissimmee, Florida, where we have four helicopters down there. We've been operating for four years now in Kissimmee.
How many will you have, or do you have here now?
I have one here now, soon to be two. We're going to get into turbine end of it, probably before the end of the year. Right now, all of our helicopters are gas-powered.
Okay, very good. And you're looking to get this constructed ASAP, I assume?
Yeah.
Where's your helicopter, where do you operate out of now? Are you over here?
We're in the T-Hanger right now, and I have an office on Northline Road that I do most of my business out of there, and we just fly out of the airport.
Okay, so you're going to consolidate, have your helicopter here and...
And an office here.
And an office. Very good.
Yeah.
Then let's, at this point, come back to the commission, and we'll go back to you again, Dan.
Sure. I was looking over at the buildings in the area, and I noticed that all the buildings appear to be fully middle-sided buildings, similar to what the applicant's brought forth. And I did notice, notice in our ordinance that it does indicate to have, you know, brick, split face, or some type of masonry at the bottom. And I was just hoping to get a little clarification from Brian. Is that something that's been added to the ordinance in order to try to improve the appearance of buildings, or how is it supposed to be taken?
Well, I honestly, I don't know the timing of it. I have not reviewed a hangar in my tenure with the township, which goes back to 2003. That's how long it's been since we've had a new hangar here. So whether all of the other hangars predated that requirement, whether that was in the ordinance but was waived by the commission, unfortunately, I don't have that detail. But I did notice the same thing, and that was why I kind of, I brought it up the way I did, is that it is, it's a requirement of the ordinance that you can hold them to. Generally speaking, with architectural standards, you do have some amount of discretion, however. And given the site location, you know, they could probably get away with not doing it, but the fact that petitioner is willing to meet the ordinance, I think we should just uphold that requirement and leave it alone.
I've been around a little bit longer than Brian has. I recall, early on, back in the 90s, the hangar that is to, the hangar, okay, it's not on, it's not, it's, it's not in here now, but it's a hangar to the north. It came through this commission. I'm about 80% certain of that. And I was over there looking at that, and that's got, that's got the brick up the side. And I know we have not changed that airport ordinance since I've been on the commission back to 91. So it's a very old ordinance, if that helps.
Yes. Yeah, I basically just wanted to point out that, you know, masonry isn't in our ordinance, but yes, I had some hesitation on pushing any applicants to provide masonry when majority of the buildings are all metal buildings right down in the ground. And again, I feel what's being presented has, is consistent with what's there now. The only other item that I wanted to comment on was just, I did not notice a handicap van accessible spot in front of the building, which requires an eight-foot-wide maneuvering lane. And that's really all the comments that I had.
That, would you talk to that, Brian?
That would be, essentially, that's the, that's the striped space next to the space. So if you only have one, you have to have at least one van-accessible space, if you have any barrier-free. So really, in this case, there only required one, so that one space will have to meet the van-accessible standards, which we can, we can provide the petitioner with a simple design template.
There's plenty of parking there.
If you've got enough room, and again, I think you, you probably have one space more than you need anyway.
Right.
So if you just wanted to convert the adjacent space, and I don't have the plan out, but the adjacent space to the southernmost space, I think you could just convert that to the striped aisle. You could narrow it up, like a foot and a half, foot, make it to eight-foot-wide. That's your van-accessible space, and you're covered. Especially since you will have potentially people, you know, public patrons.
Yeah, I'll work with you on whatever you propose.
Visiting the site. Yeah, I think that was...
There's plenty of room there, so I'm not worried about it.
I think that's the easy fix.
Yeah. Getting back to the block and the brick issue, as I said, there is a course of block that is going on top of the foundation. Now, how, how they're proposing to build the building on, on top of that and bring the siding down, I don't know. That's a question that I still have to ask the contractor. But if, if the, in the event that he says, "Yeah, we can raise the siding up to put brick," would I have to put brick along the block, or can I just leave the block? It's masonry.
The ordinance references brick or split face or concrete block, so...
I think if you, okay, again, my memory may be bad, but if you look to the, the hangar to the north, okay, maybe you know this, Mr. Duker, about that, that hangar to the north has siding that I think runs up about three feet, unless I'm thinking about something else. Do you remember offhand?
I recall the hangar to the north has siding...
I recall the hangar to the north has siding, the actual box portion of the hangar has siding that goes all the way down to the ground. The lean-to has a block that runs up the majority of the side.
Okay, that's what it is.
That was built later, the lean-to.
The lean-to is added later on.
I wouldn't be able to go three feet. That's going to change the whole design of the building, I'm sure it would. There's only one course of block on there now.
Okay, would the commission be all right simply allowing that modification?
Currently out there, correct? They're all metal?
That's what...
Which you see down the ground.
Outside of the addition, which Mike was talking about, another hangar, it is basically a foot.
That's the ordinance, then?
And that would be the way it would be interpreted.
It doesn't specify, there's no actual height required.
Right.
It just, it references that it's supposed to be, you can do metal, but it's supposed to be utilized in conjunction with brick, split face, or scored concrete block.
I would be more concerned about this personally, if this were on rural road. Not.
Right, and with that being said, there are actually, there's additional architectural standards that become, we require an increase in the material qualities when they're visible. So if this were on, if this were in Commerce Park along one of the main roadways, or were this fronting grow, this would be a different conversation. But the fact that it's internal to the site, you know, it's compatible and consistent with what's there.
Is everybody all right simply allowing the one foot, or whatever the current design calls for? Anybody have a problem with that? Okay, then we'll scratch that from the list of contingencies. Okay, let's carry on. Let's see, we've, Dan, you've had, Jay, how about you? What's your thoughts?
Yeah, the one thing I, I'm not sure was addressed with the applicant is the nine-and-a-half foot width requirement on the parking. You know, I'm not hearing that there's a parking space constraint there. We just need to make sure we're in line with that. I'm not sure that was mentioned as we were going through that. You know, other than that, I just, the only question I had was with respect to the terms in the ordinance with, it's not often that we get rules that specify, you know, something as kind of vague as "some." So it wasn't...
My technical interpretation of the ordinance, at least "some," it says "in conjunction with."
Yeah, I think, given the location, you know, I am certainly not opposed to, you know, upgrading what's there, you know, in comparison to the surrounding buildings. But at the same time, you know, I'm not sure we need to have any major rework of the plans done. It would be nice to see something a little different, you know, even one course of block, but I certainly wouldn't object to the building without that. Other than that, I don't have any concerns with it. I think, you know, it sounds like a pretty interesting addition to the airport and to the island, and look forward to seeing your helicopters buzzing overhead.
Great, thank you.
Jim?
Thank you for putting this together. Interesting, interesting business. You mentioned traffic flow. I mean, this is going to be, your business will be there, clients are going to be driving to this. You mentioned somewhat of the traffic flow. I didn't quite understand, they're going to be coming in, I know you still have the map up, they're going to be, the cars are going to be driving in. Is it the second entrance that I see here?
Yeah, there's, there aren't any, their access is only going to be via existing driveways.
Existing driveways right now?
Correct.
Okay.
And it will be an extension from how you access the building to the north. There's just going to be, it'll continue, and you'll just drive south of that. But it's already paved surface in that area.
And as far as traffic, are we going to have signage on the, on grow directing people to a certain driveway, and then another sign on the building saying, "This is where you are," type deal?
Have to do that.
From an airport standpoint, that was the one thing that I know Ken and I discussed, was we were worried about having uneducated aviation people come in, into our Hangar Two facility here, and then be driving through our T hangars with tenants taxiing out to take off. So we agreed we were going to have to have some kind of signage, which we'll go through the building department, guiding Meridian to grow, and then they'll come in this entrance that's existing here, and there's a gate.
When they come in there, are they limited then to that area, where they can't be driving all over the airport?
It's not limited, but I would imagine with some further signage, you know, of the building that way, and I assume he'll have a sign on the property, where they wouldn't be driving through the T hangar roads there. But there is no way to actually limit a fence off or limit that use.
Because I know that the feeling right now, at least me as the public, is the airport's somewhat off limits, right? You just don't fool around at the airport. Now you're inviting the public to the airport, and I'd be very curious to drive around the airport. I mean, I've got free access to it, just something to think about, right? I mean, you're not going to gate the thing off, or maybe you are. But somebody like me who has some curiosity, now that I feel that I have some access, I might drive around a bit, so think about it.
Belt point, maybe some markings on the pavement or something in the future could address that.
Great. No, great plan, thank you very much, I'll sit.
Thank you, Jim. Eric?
Certainly, it's good to see more aviation-related businesses here in the airport. We didn't specifically say, but what was the outcome of the Airport Commerce Commission meeting?
The Airport Commerce Park Commission approved a 20-year land lease for this use with a 20-year option at a meeting prior to this.
That looks good to me.
Okay, further discussion. I have to entertain a motion then regarding this application. Brian, would you list, please, the contingencies?
We're good with the blocks, so petitioner is going to add 10-foot landscape buffer between the building and parking spaces. We'll reduce the barrier-free parking to one space with the necessary striping for a van-accessible space, and we'll provide the minimum nine-and-a-half-foot-wide parking spaces.
Okay, does that cover the things we discussed? Okay, so we have a motion to approve based on those contingencies. I assume the signed discussion is automatic, or does that need to be a contingency also?
If you wanted to, you can, just for clarification, but it's, that's the process anyway. I mean, if you want to attach, you know, applicant must obtain sign permit from community development before installation of signage, that's fine. And if you want to attach comments provided by a township engineer, you could add that as well, just to...
Let's add those two, and then it's complete. Okay, so we have, will someone make a motion, please, on this? We have a motion from Jay, is there support?
Support.
Support from Eric, call a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried, welcome. We're very glad to have your business.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, let's move to the next item, which is the chair's report. There's been a number of activities relative to applications which have been kind of in limbo out there. Brian's going to run through and summarize where we stand on some of these. Bring the commission up to speed.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just did a quick bullet point list here. We've had a number of revised plans and meetings of late to try to get some of these things tidied up. You'll recall, a year, maybe a year and a half ago, gas station at the corner of Meridian and Macomb was before you, went through pre-app. They had a number of items to resolve. It took them quite a bit of time to get revised plans in. We issued a review letter with more comments to be addressed, and within the past couple of weeks, we actually received another revised plan. So we're in the process of reviewing that right now. I would expect that depending on when we look to your next meeting, my hope will be to have that item ready for your review and potential action at that next meeting. We could theoretically, this is a good point to have the conversation anyway, we did technically have the pre-app for that project already, but it was at least a year ago, if not more. So I certainly would not be opposed if we want to set them up for a pre-app again, and we'll just kind of start from scratch.
Definitely pre-app.
Fair enough. So with that being said, then, I would have full expectation that we'll have that project ready for a pre-app. Doesn't have to have all the i's dotted and t's crossed, so we will, we'll finish our review, get in contact with the applicant. We'll let them know whatever at the close of tonight, when we set our next meeting. We'll make them aware that they can be ready for pre-app if they want for that meeting.
Is it out of line to ask what the proposed site plan is right now, or should we wait?
It is very similar to what we saw before, except that the drive-through has been eliminated, which I view as a positive. I know it would have been nice, it would have been convenient for you all, but I saw a lot of potential traffic issues at that corner, at that intersection, with stacking, with turning movements. You know, if that, we talked about it before, but if that were to be a national chain coffee shop, I think, I think there would be some issues traffic-wise. That was certainly a concern of mine when we discussed it the first time. But that, as of right now, that's been eliminated from the project. So in essence, it's a revamping of the grounds, the parking, and the building itself. If you'll recall, the vehicle service bays are going to go away. The building's going to be refaced with some brick and some ephesus, as opposed to the siding and the overhead doors that it is currently. So as of right now, it looks to be a pretty nice improvement for that site.
Very good, thank you.
So the other one, recent meeting with, and this doesn't have an address, but there's a vacant property on Macomb Street. They went through pre-app several months ago as well with you. You may recall, this is the one we had some neighbor concerns about the proximity of the building and the drive to his residence. It was also a very narrow drive aisle, if you recall that project. So the chairman, myself, and the fire marshal met with the petitioner a couple weeks back, and while his revised plans came closer to addressing the zoning issues that had been raised, we opened up a whole layer of fire code issues. So the fire marshal had a number of concerns with the project, and I think I put in my notes issues that are not easily resolved, and I think that's putting it mildly. I don't know what to expect moving forward on that project. If we do hear from the petitioner, we will work with him, we'll work with the fire marshal, we'll keep you apprised. I'll be honest with you, I think that the restrictions that the fire marshal informed us about and explained to the applicant, those restrictions may very well just eliminate that project, and the applicant may have to pursue a different avenue to develop that property. That sound fair, John, in terms of a summary? I won't go into details, but there are some, there are some spacing and some separation issues because it's contiguous to residential uses on both sides, and that, again, opened up a whole new set of standards via the fire marshal, which, again, are not things that are directly tied to the zoning ordinance. But obviously, we're not, you know, we can't approve something for zoning purposes and then have the fire marshal shoot it down anyway, because it's whatever, you know, violation of his code, so...
That's a correct interpretation of what went on.
So obviously, we'll keep you apprised, and if the, you know, if the petitioner comes back in with some questions or some redesign or other ideas, whatever they may be, we'll keep you posted, but I think there's some big hurdles for that one in particular.
If I could ask a question, not on the details of the concerns that the fire marshal has, or anything related to that, but you mentioned it doesn't have a street address? Is it still part of the lot of the homeowner who wanted to build the building, or has it been split?
It's a separate parcel. It's just, it's because it's vacant, I, we just identified it as vacant Macomb Street with a generic description.
Okay, but it's a separate lot?
Yeah. It would, I mean, we, there's two addresses, there's addresses on either side. We could pretty easily figure out what it's going to be.
That's fine, I was just concerned it was still part of the...
No, it is not. That was a number, again, a lot of the discussion, we, you know, we talked about combining them, shared driveways, a lot of different options, some of which improved the zoning considerations, none of which resolved or mitigated the fire code issues.
Thanks.
We'll keep you apprised. The other one on Macomb Street, this one did have an address, so this one, you all will probably recall, so this is one that was approved. This is the larger building, was, the design was to replicate the old firehouse style. We've talked about that, you all approved it. I had a meeting with the applicant onsite to talk about a potential change in use to the, what was going to be his office space in the front of the lower level of the building. In the time since he had site plan approval and they started construction, they actually purchased other office space, so they don't need to use it for the same purpose. So they're trying to identify a potential use for that space. At this time, our conversations have been tied to a very small takeout coffee shop or pastry shop. I believe he actually was specific to a pie shop. Why it was pie, I couldn't tell you, but that's what they told me. So we have had an initial round of conversation. He did prepare, as you can all well imagine, the change from the use that was proposed to even a very small takeout restaurant-style use has a huge impact on parking. So that is really the primary consideration right now. He did, the applicant did sketch up a modified parking plan. John and I sat down and looked at that. I have John's comments, and I'll be getting together with that applicant to go over our comments and suggestions, and then ultimately, it will be up to the petitioner to, if they want to move forward, then they would have to modify their plan, come back before you with an amended site plan that we would present for your review and consideration at that time. So that's another one where, depending upon when we schedule your next meeting, I think I can work with that applicant, and we can probably have them ready for presentation at your next meeting as well. Would be a question at this point, I guess, of whether we want to try to do a pre-app situation with him to get questions out of the way, or if it looks pretty straightforward, we could just call an amendment to an approved site plan, and we could put it up for review. But I'll kind of defer to you all as to what your pleasure is.
I think this is different enough that I think this should be in front of the public twice. So please make it a pre-app.
Absolutely. Again, all the more reason to believe that we'll be ready for whatever your next meeting is.
Mr. Chair, I think it might be helpful to kind of clarify for anybody who might be watching, that our site plan approvals are contingent on the uses in many cases?
Yes.
And in this case, the approval that we've already granted does not carry over to a different use, and therefore, that's the requirement for coming back, is that?
Right. Were it a change in use to a similar or less intense use, then we would theoretically be able to do it administratively. Because we're going the opposite direction, and it necessitates a pretty significant alteration to their approved parking plan, that's why we want, we need to run it back through amended site plan review process.
Great point, Jay. Okay, what's next?
Okay, Bayview Lot Study. So this is something we're still working on. I know this one's kind of been lingering for a while as well. I do have some draft amendments that I've been preparing based on our last conversations, our last meetings where we discussed this. So I think the process at this point, because the commission generally wanted to continue moving forward with this, was I'm going to finish the draft amendments, present those to the ordinance subcommittee, and then incorporate any comment or feedback I get at that time, and then we'll bring it forward to the full commission for discussion, which we would then, at that point, if people are generally comfortable with the direction, we can discuss what type of public involvement strategy we want to implement. That's always been a key component to this one. We're not going to make any changes without involving those residents to make sure that they understand what we're doing, why we're doing it, what the potential benefits are, and really to help, so they're not kind of scared by any potential changes, quite frankly. I want them to understand, we're trying to do it for the betterment of the neighborhood. We're not trying to do anything more restrictive or anything that's going to be harmful to neighborhood character. We're trying to do just the opposite, which is to maintain the established neighborhood character, very similar to what we did on the East Riverside. So that, again, that one's going to be a couple of steps more in the process, but we are, we've not lost sight of that, nor have we stopped work on it. It just has taken a little bit longer than expected.
Very good. Based on what you just reviewed, what's your recommendation relative to a next meeting date?
So I put on the slide, so may we have... So I put on the slide, so May we have the first, third, and fifth Mondays, so 1/15 or 29. I'll be honest with you, even as close as we are on a couple of these, May 1st is probably way too soon for me, and I don't think you all want to see me again in two weeks. So I would say, if we're going to shoot for May, I would, I would appreciate the additional time. If the 29th, although that's, is that Memorial Day? I knew it. I would say May, May 15 or June 5 would probably be, I think I can have the gas station and 7968 McCombe ready for pre-app for May 15. That'll give me a couple of weeks to get them in order, and then a week to prepare materials, a week in advance to get them to you all, if you want to meet that soon. If not, probably would default to June 5, just so we're not delaying those projects too long.
How does May 15 sound to people? How's that lineup with schedules? You okay? Dan, you all right?
That works for me.
Eric?
Looks good.
Jim?
Yes.
Let's try for the 15th.
Can I do my, my normal, if we're not ready or if things aren't progressing, we'll inform everyone. But I would say if you, if you pencil it in for the 15th, we'll work with those two applicants to get everything ready, and if we encounter a hiccup of some sort, I'll let you know as soon as possible.
Okay, and we will, we do not need to deal with the Lot Study, the Bayview Lot Study at that meeting.
Sure.
So focus on the applicants so that we can get those projects.
Yeah. We'll get, we'll get those two in order first, and then as an aside to this, I'll work with the ordinance subcommittee, and we'll, we'll look for our next meeting, so we have a target, and we'll pick up Bayview again at that point.
Okay, very good. All right, that takes us to the end of the chair's report. We'll plan on May 15th for the next meeting. Any additional questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, then entertaining motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.